Okay, we're gonna call the regular meeting of our State City Council for the January 9, 2018 meeting order. I think we do have one group that would like to make a presentation to the City Council. Wayne, would you like to stand up?
Yes, on behalf of the votative committee, presenting you guys this plight for the continued support that you guys give us, helping us make success every year. I'm glad you had given today and let you guys pass around. Again, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Wayne. We would like to thank the Votative Committee for all the good work that you all do and good use of the money that you raise for scholarships and all that. It's a great event, well-attended, and I think it's one of those events that people look forward to year after year. I know there's a ton of work going on here, because I know several of the council members are involved. You do a great job, and it's wonderful for our community. Any other council members that would like to speak to that?
I'll speak to it. But, once again, I would just like to say thank you, because it's a hometown event, and it brings people from out of state, and it just seems like the hometown picnic or gathering. We, it seems that it, there's no trouble down there, you know? The police are in attendance, but it's seph ran. It's really smooth. It's one of the best ran festivals that I've seen, and I've seen a lot of them. So, just thank you for, it came from humble beginnings, and now it's here. So, thank you so much, and we look forward to the anniversary of the votative celebration. So, I know it's gonna be a knockout.
How many years next year is it gonna be? Twenty twenty-four? God forbid, second you were a young kid when that got said.
Your hair was black.
We didn't have enough to drink.
Thanks again, Wayne, for your presentation.
Thanks again, thank you guys.
Appreciate all y'all doing this.
Thanks, Wayne.
Okay, next item on the agenda, you know, having this or HRP or playing zoning, so if everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the December 26 meeting. If there's no correction or addition, can we approve that by unanimous consent?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the business is that actual report by her. Tracy Hudson's going to talk about our 2017 audit. Before she starts, I would just like to say that I met with Linda Gray at least twice while she was doing the audit, and then spoke with her on two occasions after the audit, and she was very complimentary of our staff and our record-keeping. Of course, Linda's done this audit for us for many years. She talked about how cooperative we are, how we make the records readily available to her, which helps her put her work together on a much more efficient and faster basis, which I think overall saves us money in the long run. She said not, not every city is as organized as we are in that regard. You know, a lot of times they're struggling to find records, and you know, this is no small audit, and they're auditing over $50 million in transactions. So, she was very complimentary. It was a very clean audit. I think we're in a stronger position at the end of this past fiscal year than we were in the previous fiscal year. Tracy will put, talk about that a little bit. Before she does, I will want to take a moment to compliment Tracy on how confident she is in her job. If you might remember, I took over this position in the middle of April and early in May. Tracy came to me, and she said that we probably need to put a, put a stop or a hold on expenditures out of the general fund, because we were running pretty tight, and if we didn't hold them, we would possibly end up like we were last year with a negative balance in the general fund. So, she brought that right to me, and put a, put an order out May 15th, I think it was, and told all the departments to withhold spending in the general fund operations until the end of the budget year. And from doing that, we avoided being in a negative balance, which was what happened with us last year. So, I complimented Tracy on being on top of that, bringing that to my attention, and within the first two weeks, I was back in this job. So, I appreciate that. And Tracy, I'll turn it over to you. You've got some comments to make. I know, you know, I've received a copy of it, but I'm sure it's, it's not reading that you probably would do on an everyday basis. I read the audit last week. It's a 60-page audit, and it's, your eyes gotta get crossed at times if you read into that, trying to understand it. But if you got any questions after her presentation tonight, I mean, you can ask us some questions, but if you individually'd like to stop in and see her, she, when I ask her questions, she'll just say, "Well, that's on page 27." She's, she's got it handled pretty well. So, Tracy, floor is yours.
Okay, I'll put my notes up there in case my voice gives up, too. So, on page 55, you don't have to go to it if you just want to make your notes. The net pension liability is increased by a couple million this year. Of course, it's based on payroll. That number fluctuates up and down each year, depending on how much the city has to pay out and the city's requirements for the state. And that's what they refer to as the GASP 68. The general fund itself, if you look on page 17, the whole general fund improved by a million dollars compared to the last audit. Unfortunately, because of the net pension liability, then six million, it puts the, it looks like it's a negative. The combined utilities fund is unchanged from FY16. I think there was a $100,000 difference, which is actually really good. They did a lot of projects last year, so the fact that the reserve is the same as last year is great. What has helped the general fund, if you look on page 19, the property tax was increased by $100,000, and that's because council chose to keep the same rates. You're not putting a burden on the community, but you are helping the general fund, so your taxpayer doesn't feel that. Also, the cap was removed last year, or the FY16, which is carried over into this audit. It was occupational tax between 1% increase for five months of this year, and remove the cap was $1.2 million over what we normally get each year. What I always find interesting is page 53, it's the budget to actual. It's what we start with July 1, and then if there's any amendment, that's what the final number is. So, in FY16, I was looking at that tonight. Our fund balance ended $298,000, but this year for FY17, it ended at $1,009,471. So, it's a huge improvement. The mayor's already touched on halting the expenditures out of, by May 15th, and that was really just anything that they didn't need at that moment, like, I mean, their day-to-day, they'll keep them running. They were still scared of that, but if there was anything as far as purchases that could hold off until the next fiscal year, that's what they were asked to do. Also, the general fund, last year at this time, the general fund checking account was less than $100,000. This time this year, we're at $1.3 million. So, it's really going strong. And that's a big part of, with the mayor, he's involved with all the financials every week. He wants to know why we're paying this, what it's for, who authorized it. So, I think that makes the department more aware of what they're purchasing. I think former Mayor Shekels used to do the same thing, a little questions, and we'd know what it was for.
Get tired of it.
I don't know, I love it. I love it. No, it's interesting. If you'll look to your three-page packet, this is from the auditor, and basically, there was three issues that had to, that she found during the audit, went into the report, the other two did not. One of them was, we had invested with a local bank that we had not used before, and unfortunately, when I went to invest it, I did $3.6 million and $416 for the utilities, and just took it for granted that we automatically get a collateralization. So, it was not, so we got dinged for it, but that sense has been remedied as soon as she found it. I took care of it. The second one, they're talking about the net pension liability for the dispatch center. Excuse me. Right now, we are still responsible for their portion up until December 30th of 2015, when they went off of our payroll. So, I'm still waiting on them to be in the retirement system. It's two years later, and they're still not. So, once they are, the dispatch center and the city council and mayor will need to have an agreement in order to put that over.
Do you know whether they've applied for that, or?
They, they have applied. Before Carter left, she told me she was waiting on a lawyer to finalize the paperwork. I talked to Milt, I think it was end of October, beginning of November, and he was still trying to get it. And then with the pension crisis that was in place, there were some other, I don't know, he didn't tell me who, but they were trying to push him not to do the KRS to go into, I guess, a 401K rather than doing the KRS. So, it's still up in the air, unfortunately.
That's the guys left on the front. We, we had a payroll.
Yeah, for kind of stuff like our, for our missions, what we want them to assume. I think the little $500 on that part of it.
What was that, sorry?
It was a little, something over a million dollars for that part of it.
Yeah.
The amount that we have, I think it's 14 million, never mind, something.
That's right. The third finding was the credit cards. There was only two receipts missing, totaled $173. The other thing was $106 is paid in sales tax, because the city's tax exempt. But that's hugely improved.
Fifty maybe not.
Yeah, I know, it seems very small, but, yeah. One else thing, oh, and to touch back on, when we, that page 53, that's the budget to actual. If you look at the expenditures and the revenues, you can actually see the departments. The only one that went over budget was the fire department, and it was by $2,001, so it's very small. So, that was okay. It took, the prior year fund balance took care of that. And I'm looking forward, the mayor might want to discuss this, about the air packs for the fire department, our plans with that. And I just want to say that between the council and Mayor Heaton, there's been a lot of positive steps that have gone to the right direction.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. A couple things, Dan will, you know. The new, new investment and reassessments would help property tax revenue go up, but we kept the same tax rate, so that didn't really have any effect. It was mainly because of the investment and expansions and that kind of thing, so that's why that grew. And then the, you know, occupational tax was changed the prior year, so we're now able to balance our general fund much more prudently without taking any dividends from the utility department to balance the general fund, which was where we were prior to that, so that's made a major improvement. She mentioned something about our budget. You know, Tracy and I are already having some discussion, how we're gonna fix this half-million to $600,000 hole in our next budget due to the pension and reassessment on the pension. So, one of the things that we talked about here recently, on the air packs, we're budgeted to spend $119,000 to buy half of them this year, and $111,000 to buy half of them next year. We found out through some of the banks that they got a lease-to-own program, that we can spread this purchase over three years, and spend about $5,000 to $6,000 a month and not spend the entire $230,000 in cash. That will help us have a better balance in our general fund at year-end, this fiscal year-end, and the following year-end. It's not the $500,000 fix, but that's just one action we can take, among others, that we're gonna be working on between now and when we put together our next budget to find the way we're gonna fill this half-million-dollar hole. I mentioned earlier, might be some capital projects we may forego in the general fund side of our operations, and will also help in that regard. But then, the other options are not near as easy. You know, it's gonna take belt to do that, and I've been talking to some other mayors around the state, and you know, it's, it's a huge problem for everybody, but I'm not gonna sit around and wait till June 1st to start thinking about how we're gonna fix it. So, Tracy and I are already working on that, talking to Linda Gray, lots of other ideas, but I think we're gonna, instead of doing the $119,000 expenditure in cash this year and $111 next year for the air packs, we'll do this lease-to-own thing. After three years, we pay a dollar, we own, pay $5,000 or so a month, and that'll save us quite a bit of money to help this general fund balance.
Yeah, it was all, because sometimes it goes into utilities and everything, you all be able to handle this, and $100,000 on the general fund, be a big chunk of it that's a general fund portion.
Right, because the liability is about $230,000 next year additional in the general fund side, which is an odd.
So, that's half, that's, you know, you're getting a chunk of it, of course, you're still spending money.
About $260,000 of it is gonna be on the utility side. So, if we can find 50 grand, you know, over two years, that's 100 grand of that liability that we'll hopefully cover. So, just want to make you all aware, you know, we're already trying to look at waste and solve the problem. And then, at the next meeting, after you all have had more time to review the audit, and either ask Tracy any questions, we're gonna ask you all to formally ask for a vote to approve the audit as presented, so we'll do that at the next meeting. Any other questions or comments on that right now?
I'll just make one small comment. I was one of those that kind of set up Mayor Crossside and read the majority of the report, and after, it's, it's pretty amazing that that size of an audit with our budget came up with basically three line items that were relatively small. So, it's, it's very impressive, and congratulations to Tracy and you and the staff, the work that you've done.
That's another reason Linda said, you know, I could come out and present this. She said it would be a good, thank me, my hourly rate to come out and talk, if you all had all kinds of problems and severe issues, she said it might be an improvement. She said I would remember about six or seven stops a year, and you all certainly go need me to share this, this type of audit, so.
Well, she was here last year.
Yeah, it was not as, it was not as good a situation. And add it back to it, Tracy and I went through it, not every page, but we went through it pretty, some stat should tell from her notes and so forth, that she was on top of it, and I think overall, we'll be happy with this performance. I hope next, end of this fiscal year, we'll get similar results with our efforts. So, thank you, Tracy.
May I have a question? What's the procedure when you have a situation where you have missing receipts?
Technically, we're, the city's not supposed to pay it unless they have a receipt, but we will call the, the reference number on the statement, get a copy of it, and then the department head will have to sign off on it. We do have a credit card policy in place that only allows for certain people to have those credit cards, and so really, it puts it back on them. So, if someone uses my card, then they don't turn in the receipt. I'm really supposed to pay that until they find the receipt. So, when they bring the card back, we're pretty demanding of the receipts.
I think we still have, I mean, that's her job to point that out, but you got about 20 million of the budgets passed through between affiliate fees and what we pay KU for our electricity. So, we got over $30 million worth of transaction happening, and you end up with only $172 in receipt. That's, Tracy's doing a good job of holding her feet to the fire, and I know Chief Cressick does a good job in our department, and Charles is holding their feet to the fire. So, thank you, Tracy. Any other comments, any questions? Okay, the next thing is a second read, classification compensation plan.
Need to read the summary, it doesn't need to be introduced, it just needs the summary. Summary of ordinance B 2018-01, and ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance styled an ordinance creating classification plan and compensation plan. This ordinance amends ordinance B 2016-10, B 2016-15, B 2017-11, B 2017-14 in Chapter 35 Employment Policies, the Classification and Compensation Plan in Municipal Code by amending the number of authorized positions, their title and pay grade, and setting ranges for pay grades for city employees for fiscal year 2017-18 and subsequent years. The amendments and additions reflecting the number of positions, title, and pay grade respectively are: Engineering Department, add one, administrative engineer, part-time, 121. This ordinance or parts of ordinance is in conflict herewith or appealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication and summary as required by law, and I certify that this summary is prepared by B. Tim Butler, City Attorney.
Okay, so we, it's already introduced, the last meeting, something we have to add that again?
Just a motion.
It's gonna be a motion to approve the ordinance B 2018-01 for administrative engineer, part-time. Motion to Councilman Shekels, do we have a second? Second, and Councilman Jones, any discussion? Seeing that in all in favor, signal of saying aye. Oh, excuse me, start over here, Senator, aye, sorry, John?
Aye.
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 Motion carried, thank you. Okay, staff reports, we've got an amendment to our lease access agreement with WDRT. It's one of the gentleman's in the back. Eric?
WDRT asks us to do a great study on what they pay for access for Channel 19. The last one was done in 2014, based on, it's a formula that we had adopted from a lawyer that just gives a time of day for per hour, and so they asked us to reanalyze that based on our 2018 numbers. We wanted to adjust the timing of when they had access to Channel 19, so because of that, it lowered the rate that they will be paying monthly for what's called a lease access, or access to our Channel 19. So, it was just a new agreement between us and WDRT for that access.
That agreement will get formalized, and then asked for approval?
Yes.
All right, and then, any questions on that, Eric?
What were we paying for that? It used to be, what, $400 a month?
It was about $450 a month. Because of the, several factors in the formula, which is a very difficult expression that took me at home about data look analyzed, it's down to about $130, but they also adjusted their, their timing. So, they decreased some of their evening time slot, which significantly affected it, but also our rate structure, our customer counts lowered that down also.
Okay, any other questions on that? Then, I think we've already had a little publicity over the cable retransmission agreements, negotiated agreements, so we're gonna address that.
We in the home, both. I mean, I know, you know, I've seen all those, the mayor, you know, learned how he's a master negotiator, listened to him, the previous session with former circles on him. You know, we, Mayor Heaton and their mill negotiated as best rate as they can. They're, we sent out a stuffer and the bills that people are currently getting, you know, just trying to explain how it's not our fault, you know, it's just a pass-through for the programming. So, we're looking at $5.40 a month increase in.
$39.6.
Right, for that, for the retransmission of those, of just those, Louisville and Lexington news, and that's just a pass-through. You know, we have additional $3 on top of that for the channels 23 through 79, you know, for expanded basic, so, which is, you know, the majority of our cable customers, so, you know, across the two, you know, you're looking at around an $8, $8.50 increase for channels 2 through 79. And, you know, we're, we're prepared for that. Questions and threatening to drop, but, you know, the main point we, you know, is it's just a pass-through for the cost of programming.
Their original, I think I sent you all an email, just with the others here at the meeting, that their original motion for networks was $8.64 increase for the first year, which was 111% higher than what we're currently paying, and we were able to get that down to $5.39, which was a 69% increase in the first year. And going back three years ago, two of the four networks, one we had paid an 80% increase, and another we had paid 89%. So, we were able to come in under, under that quite a bit compared to what we had to do three years ago. So, we did as best we can. They swore they didn't do any agreements this cheap and all that kind of stuff, and, you know, back, I did all the gamesmanship that comes with this kind of stuff, and I told them we didn't do any agreements at the rate they were asking either, so at the end of the day, we.
I would like to stress how, you know, of, of the entire cable bill, $7 is what we hold on to for operating costs. You know, so we're looking at 68.74 in the, in the city limits is what, you know, for basic and expanded basic. We retain only $7 per customer of that, and that just goes to, you know, our expenses. So, everything above that is strictly the cost of programming as a pass-through.
That's gross, $7 gross, not bad.
Right, that's just, goes to our, for our performance.
Always cable.
Trucks, added equipment, trucks, personnel, equipment, you know, all that's funded by.
All that comes out of $7.
Per customer, per.
Per month.
So, what exactly is expanded basic? What's that?
That's channels 23 through 79. It's, you, it's its own package, but, you know, you have to have basic in order to get it, so, you know, it's, it's usually viewed as, you know, $60 something for all of them, but it's, it's an additional add-on, so a customer can get just basic, channels 2 through 22, or then they can add on the expanded basic package.
So, what is a basic?
Just basic is going, going to 2065. In the city limits.
Say that again.
2065. In the city limits, there's a higher cost for further distance in the county, and then additional $48.09 for expanded basic. So, we did our best, we have to have a 30-day notification for customers, which is why in the current letter that people are getting their bills now, we had a letter on what we thought it would go to, you know, based on the current agreement, so, you know, the amount in the letter and where it'll actually go to is a little bit different, so, but it was, in order to notify customers with, at the current rate, but we're going to rewrite the letter explaining what their current rate will be when the bills that they get for February.
Any other questions, Eric, on the retransmission agreements? Ray, would you like to give us kind of quick update on the search?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Last Tuesday, which was the second, I believe, the committee interviewed seven applicants for the fire chief's position. They, I thought we had a pretty good selection to choose from. The interviews went, took all day, but they, they went really, really well. The committee narrowed those down to three to submit to the mayor. Three very good applicants, and he and I have interviewed those, I believe we finished those up today, and he'll be making his decision. He's got three really good applicants, so I don't envy his position, so he'll be making it over whatever timeframe you want.
Right, it's very similar to our experience with police chief, who we hired, Chief Cressick, we're gonna do some more of that, because they are all three very strong candidates. So I appreciate the work of the committee. I wish it had just seventy-one, but three is really a strong group, so I'll be working on that with Greg now in the next few days. Hopefully, hopefully, I think within the next week, we'll be able to finalize the decision, bring that decision to you guys to approve it.
As a member of the committee, I wanna thank Greg for all his work. He has really made our job easy, both, I served on both committees, the fire chief and the police chief, and he's done an outstanding job of organizing and getting everything together, and helping us in the direction we need to go.
All right, thank you Greg. Next item, I don't remember if I ever put this on the agenda, I guess Mary, you might put this on the agenda.
I did at the request of Councilman Jones, and we approved the agenda, so I thought you saw it.
The next item is an update on the Stephen Foster amphitheater. I'll tell you what I know at this point, when we got the letter that said they wanted to close the entire amphitheater, including the offices, that was, first of all, that was the same day we'd had that meeting in Frankford, and they never discussed closing the offices. They talked about the stage area, the dressing room area, it was unsafe structurally and with electrical. And then by the time Judge Watson and I got back to Barstown, we received a copy of the letter that came from the legal counsel of Parks, saying that not only were they closing the stage area, they wanted Johnny Warren and Margaret Elder to vacate the office area, which we knew that that was not unsafe, because it had gone through a major renovation in about '96 or something, so I'm not an electrical engineer, but I was smart enough to know that you could isolate that, so I called Jeff Miller first thing on that Friday morning, and I said, Jeff, there, I'm pretty sure there's a way to isolate this electric so that, you know, they can keep the office open and be safe and not create any kinda issue. Jeff went out there immediately, checked it, and confirmed what we already knew, really, that you can isolate the lower house from the upper house. And we sent that information and pictures to Frankford, and it took them probably a couple of days, but they got back to Johnny and said, you all can stay in your office and continue to work. Because the whole thing is, is we're trying to work here locally as best we can, coming up with a plan to address the structural and electrical issues, which are, there's some major issues there. So we got that approved. They have since given us permission, and I say us, the city of Barstown, Nelson Fiscal Court, Salt River, and the Drama Association, along with an engineer that's Drama has hired, are now starting to, we're trying to take the report we got from the state, which was not much of a report, really just pictures most, more than anything. They've given us permission to access the property, to assess the damage structurally and electrical, and then using an engineer to come up with a plan and a cost for the reconstruction that would be needed, and the electrical work that would be needed. And hopefully, we submit that to the state, get that approved, hopefully we can raise the money locally to do that. And we think if we could get the state's cooperation and approval, then it's doable, that with some in-kind work locally, and people are, people are reaching out, asking, you know, how they can help financially and so forth. So we're, you know, it's not a done deal by any means, and, but we feel much better than we felt that Thursday, which was, I guess, Thursday before Christmas, which was about the 21st, I think, of December. You know, and the state is, Jimmy Higgin, and I'm gonna give credit to Jimmy Higgin and Chad McCoy also working with state officials, and we usually pass the information on to Senator Higgin, and he goes to Parks, and he's already met with the commissioner and some others. So we're making progress, as I say, it's not a done deal, but the amount of support and stuff that I'm getting calls from people who want to help is very encouraging, and I think between, at this point, the city's not committing anything financially, other than we're giving some of Jeff's time to sit in on these meetings, because he's familiar with, we provide the electric to theirs, and they need our information to help assess that. And Salt River is, I think, looking at the repairs that need to be made to the stage area and to the dressing room area. And then we've got some outside contractors that are looking at to possibly help with some in-kind work on the labor, and we'll have to, I'm sure, raise some, cover the cost of the construction. This budget year is out in terms of the state coming with any money in this budget year, but the new budget year, we're hopeful that Senator Higgin and Representative McCoy can find some money to help augment this work that's needed. So stay tuned, I think we're all working diligently to make sure that this show opens for the 60th season without missing a year because of the needs that they have on the structural and electrical problems they got out there, so. You don't know what you're gonna have until it's gone, so we don't wanna have to be looking here next year and say, boy, it'd been nice if we had that show going, so. I'll keep you all informed as we go on this. Okay, under new business, we have one appointment, Sarah Ballard, who currently serves on the Historic Reboard, her term has expired, she's up for renewal, excuse me, for another three-year term, and she's agreed to serve. So I would ask that you all make a motion, someone make a motion to reappoint Sarah to her position for another three-year term on the Historic Reboard.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilman Butler, and second by Councilman Williams, is there any discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment about Sarah, she's, she's very, very good on the board, very thorough and very fair, looks at all the angles, if there's any complications, she generally tries to work it out, probably the best one on there right now for doing that.
Thank you, Dr. Sarah.
Huh?
Dr. Sarah Ballard.
Dr. Sarah Ballard. Yeah, she is good.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, Superbaba saying aye?
Aye.
Owe? Motion is carried. The next one is Resolution 2018-01. I mean, Chief, you wanna introduce it, or can I read the summary?
I can, I can read it, Mayor, then I guess the chief can provide whatever explanation. This is Resolution R 2018-01, a resolution of the City of Barstown, Kentucky authorizing the mayor to make application for and upon approval to enter into an agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, K.O.H.S., to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by K.O.H.S. to facilitate and minister the project and to act as the authorized correspondent for this project. Whereas the City of Barstown, Kentucky desires to make application for law enforcement protection program funds for a project to be administered by Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, and whereas it is recognized that an application for and approval of Kentucky Office of Homeland Security funds impose certain obligations and responsibilities upon the city, now therefore being resolved this ninth day of January 2018 by the City of Barstown, Kentucky. That, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute and furnish all required documentation, including a memorandum of agreement as may be required by K.O.H.S. for the furtherance of the above referenced project and to act as the authorized correspondent for said project.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Chief, would you like to comment on this?
Yes, sir. So we are applying for a grant to replace five body armor vests in the amount of $3,212.90. Five of our vests are out of date, and this grant is through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, and we would, they provide these vests, and it is a no-match grant. We would purchase the grants and then they would reimburse us. And so anywhere where we could have these grants where the money does not come out of our budget, we are looking for opportunities for grants where we could get these to come to aid our police department without using city money. And this grant requires the support of the mayor and the council.
That's why we have the resolution. I would ask them for a motion to approve Resolution 2018-01 for the Homeland Security Grant.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Kelly, and a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hope. Any other discussion? All in favor, Superbaba saying aye?
Aye.
Owe? Motion is carried. Thank you, Tim, thank you, Chief. Next thing is, have any comments or things that council members would like to bring before the meeting this evening? All right, I think, okay. And then, next item is two cemetery deeds, one for Joe Porter for one grade, and then Rita Brendon for two grades, so we'll get that approval by unanimous consent for that. So, okay. Announcements, Councilman Shackle's gonna make announcement about Martin Luther King?
Oh, yes. We're gonna have the annual Martin Luther King Day celebration at St. Martin's, Catholic Church at noon on, this coming, my 15th. Everyone's welcome. It's gonna be a pretty good program this year, we've got former pastor at St. Martin's, Father John Judy, who's always been a popper speaker, popper in the neighborhood, so he's agreed to come in and present the message, and it should be a very interesting day. Looking forward to seeing everybody.
What time is it?
Noon.
Any other announcements? One thing I would say, I've got this, I'm short notice, but we have a longtime city employee, David Kimberlin, who's been with us for 32 years, has given us his notice, he's retiring Friday. I'm not sure he got, gave us a two-week notice on this one. Friday is his last day, and David will be sorely missed. He's been a wonderful employee at Public Works, and 32 years, and I know for those who know him, he's been a tremendous mentor and a person trained a lot of people. A lot of people come through his department in 32 years, and he'll be greatly missed. So I think we're gonna have a little get-together for him Friday at noon at public works, if you, council members would like to stop by, I'm sure he'd be happy if you wanna stop by, I think they're gonna have some lunch for him, and cake, and I don't know if any other shenanigans, but anyway, he didn't give us much notice, that's why I'm letting it all out tonight, so I think he's got some things planned, I think music's in his calling, what he plans to do more of, which is one of his passions, and he's got some other jobs that he says are keeping busy, so. That's all I have, unless anybody else has anything. I have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Williams, a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hope, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Owe? All right, we are adjourned, thank you.
You're welcome.
I meant to tell you before the meeting, you know...